I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, April 24th, 2023, and the time is 6:00 PM. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome, members of the community here tonight to observe the important work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. Dr. Hellman, we have some items in the table file.
Yes, we have several items in the table file this evening. Under personnel items, we have some appointments, increase, decrease, change in assignment. Oh, we have some leaves of absence and a retirement and a resignation. That is what's in the table file this evening.
Very good. If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Move by Jeff, second? Second my Robert, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, K motion carries. Uh, Nina, do we have any public comment? Okay, that was item three. We'll go on to item four announcements and recognitions, Dr. Hellman.
Yes, we have a few this evening. Uh, first, uh, just making sure that we go back and congratulate our two Northfield High School girls, state champion wrestlers. So Kaylee Graber is the state champion at 100 pounds and Ella Pagel is the state champion at 165 pounds. And this is Ella's second consecutive state championship. So, uh, girls wrestling a newer sport in Minnesota governed by the high school league and Northfield has really put its stamp on it right away, um, really dominating in a lot of ways, a couple of state champions. It's a pretty big deal. Uh, we also want to congratulate Raider volleyball player Sydney James. Sydney was recently recognized at as a St. Paul area Athena Award winner. The Athena Awards Program Honors Outstanding Female High School Senior Student Athletes from St. Paul and suburban public and independent high schools for their athletic achievements. And the award is based on excellence in individual sports or for participation and accomplishments in team sports. And Sydney will be continuing her volleyball career playing in the Southeastern Conference at the University of Tennessee. Uh, that's a biggie, right? So congratulations to Sydney for her Athena Award and for, uh, continuing her volleyball experience at Division One. And then we'd be remiss if we did not, uh, mention thanks to all of the art teachers and all of the volunteers who helped with one of the most exciting, uh, annual events this past Friday night, Arts à la Carte. We always judge it based upon whether it was hot and crowded and unfortunately I was out of town, so I was unable to attend, but my scientific research says that it was both hot and crowded. And so, uh, thanks to the art teachers for really making that immersive experience that first of all showcases our student artists' work. And it gets children from the community and their, their families to see themselves as artists. And so it's truly a one of a kind Northfield event. And, uh, we're so proud of the work that our art department does, uh, pre-K through 12 and Arts à la Carte being one of their capstone events. Those are the announcements for this evening.
Thank you. Board members, any other announcements or recognitions? Item five is our discussion and reports. The first item we have is Director of Child Nutrition Stephanie Stormy presenting the proposed 2023-24 Child Nutrition Fund Budget. This is a highly regulated fund to which only child nutrition expenses are charged. There is no board action required at this meeting. Okay, welcome Stephanie.
Thank you. Is it on? Okay. I want to thank you all for allowing me to come and visit with you this evening to discuss the child nutrition program and our budget for the 23-24 school year. I'd also like to take this time to welcome all of the new board members, um, this evening. We're excited to have this opportunity to share what the child nutrition department has done over the past year and share in the district's vision to prepare every student for lifelong success by developing critical thinkers who are curious and ready to engage in our society. I'm sure you've become familiar with seeing this slide in other presentations. Um, as we think through our department processes, we try to ensure that every student, um, and the visions that we're using, the commitments and the benchmarks that we're using, um, all are involved in our decision-making. As part of Northfield School Strategic Plan and Benchmarks, the Child Nutrition Department shares responsibility and understands the importance that by providing quality nutritious meals that support the growth and development of our students to feel their learning, we will have helped in creating a positive learning environment for our students' well-being. In the next few slides, I will review some of our meal participation data from the 22-23 school year. This slide represents approximately how many meals were served through March 31st of this school year. I did leave on school year 2020 because it was a little more, um, you know, it kind of was in line with what we typically would be serving. And then I did leave on school years 22 and 23 because those are the years that through the pandemic that we served free meals. And then again, our current school year of school year 2023 is more typical of what we would be serving. As a reminder, we did have six snow days which impacted our participation. And then also we always take into account um, the decrease that we have in student enrollment. Breakfast has been proven to positively affect learning in children in terms of behavior, cognitive and school performance. Offering breakfast for all students at Northfield Schools ensures that every student can be ready to learn every day. Data collected through March 31st, 2023 shows that so far this school year, we've served about 49,710 breakfasts, which was a decrease in meals, um, by approximately 63% from the 21-22 school year during the same time period. This decrease is due to the discontinuation of, um, free meals, so free breakfast for all students and breakfast at the NCEC. Our enrollment is also down to 145 students since school year 2019. So if you're looking at that comparison from 2019 in March of third, March 31st of 56,000 to current year of 49,000, those are the reasons we, um, projected to have that decrease. As of March 31st, 2023, we were at approximately 71% of possible meal participat- participation days. Data collected through March 31st, 2023 shows that so far this school year, we've served about 258,000 meals, um, which was also a decrease in the lunch meals by approximately 9% from the 21-22 school year during the same time period. Again, the main contributors for that, um, were the decrease in enrollment. Also, um, the snow days were an impact on that and the fact that we went back to meals for free, reduced and paid, um, students. This school year, um, community school was offered at three elementary schools and the middle school. I apologize because this slide is a little bit offset here. It should say as of March 31st. Um, so through March 31st, we provided over 12,000 snacks, um, that were free to all of these, these students that attended these programs. Also at Greenville Park Elementary on Tuesday and Thursday evenings, we provided a cold supper meal for these students. Um, so they could have a sandwich, fruit, vegetable, milk, um, in the evenings if they stayed for community school. As the school year started, we continued to face many uncertainties. As we faced those uncertainties, one thing we kept in mind was how we were going to continue serving quality nutritious meals to our students while remaining fiscally responsible and still meeting the USDA program requirements. Nationwide, the manufacturing and distribution industry has been experiencing severe staffing and labor shortages as well as rising costs of materials and transportation. These issues are impacting schools with anticipated shortages, um, outages, substitutions, increased prices and reduced options. School nutrition staff have had to make last minute changes to regular menus based on food availability. To help school districts deal with these challenges of supply chain disruptions brought on by the pandemic, USDA provided $1 billion in financial assistance for school nutrition programs, um, specifically the meal programs. Northfield received approximately $172,241 that can be used towards milk, um, and then fresh produce purchases. We continue each year to try and expand our farm-to-school program. In addition to the previously mentioned supply chain assistant funds that we received, um, for the produce and milk that we were able to use for purchasing Ferndale Farms turkey, other fresh vegetables and produce. Um, we also received a farm-to-school grant of $5,000 and that allowed us to purchase local apples. Next, I would like to review the proposed budget for the 23-24 school year. Due to market vol- volatility over the last two school years, uh, it is difficult to forecast our revenue and expenditures for the 23-24 school year. Again, I have the, um, picture here of the dart, um, kind of the money because of the uncertainty of where we are going to land. We certainly try our best. Um, but the last couple of years I've used this slide and felt it was still appropriate for the upcoming school year. Revenue for the school year 23-24 was calculated using data from the previous three school years, actual budgets. On Friday, March 17th of 2023, Governor Walz signed the Free School Meals Bill into law. Um, formerly you may have known it as the Universal Meals. Um, it is now being called Free School Meals. This will take effect with the 23-24 school year. This legislation provides the reimbursement for a free breakfast and a free lunch to students who receive meals through the USDA programming, um, of the National School Lunch Program and School Breakfast Program. Because Northfield Public Schools does, um, use this USDA program, we are required to provide a free meal and free breakfast to all of our students. We are waiting for further guidance from MDE, um, if this new law will include free meals for pre-K students. And we aren't sure if we'll be required to do any model changes with that. There's a few different programs. We know that K through 12 will stay on the National School Lunch and School Breakfast Program, but we are uncertain if we would have to change to, um, like a CEP, which is a community eligibility program or, um, another model to serve for the different groups. It is our goal to provide quality nutritious meals for all students, as I have said, that support their growth and development. But also we understand as a business operation, the need to remain fiscally responsible. With this new free meal program, we are planning to continue current meal operations, but we'll always reevaluate what we feel is sustainable and able to continue. We're also uncertain how our à la carte sales will be impacted by the free meals program. We anticipate we could see an increase in these à la carte sales because of, um, the ability for all students to receive a free lunch during the day. School nutrition program funds may not subsidize meals served to non-program adults. A program adult would be somebody who works directly with the child nutrition program. So my staff each receive a free meal during the day, um, but a non-program adult is required to pay. The adult meal price must be set high enough so the customer fully pays the cost of the meal. For school year 23-24, updated minimum, um, adult meal prices and second meal prices will not be available to us usually until USDA releases them, and that's in the summer sometime or late spring. We are proposing to increase adult and second meal prices from $4.95 to $5 for next year, um, just to cover means of inflation and things, uh, but we will continue to evaluate and make changes necessary based on what the USDA requires us to do for a minimum. The proposed budget revenue for the school year of 23-24, as you can see on the slide, is $2,407,584. After consulting with our food vendors regarding the expected market for the 23-24 school year, it's difficult to accurately anticipate food costs due to inflation. Our primary food vendor had indicated that they're expecting most food costs to remain stable, but that we'll see a high increase, um, in the proteins. Um, and up to about 10% cost increase is what they had anticipated. Others have suggested about a four to six percent increase in food costs. The Consumer Price Index, um, currently, as of, you know, a couple of weeks ago, showed about eight to 8.4% over the last 12 months is where, um, it had been. This year, we budgeted using actual staffing hours and rates to get more accurate data. To help decrease the financial burden on our staff and their families, we will see a significant increase in our group hospitalization expenses due to the district contribution towards health insurance premiums. And then after a completion of the district-wide cost analysis of chemical products, um, we are anticipating a change that will help to reduce, um, the costs that we have currently been doing with our supply costs and chemicals. Due to the above-mentioned expenses, we plan to have an additional spend down in our fund balance for the 23-24 school year that will put us below the temporary six-month operating expense requirement from MDE. And I'll explain that a little bit more in the next slide. The proposed budget expenditures for the 23-24 school year, as you can see on the slide, are $2,645,000. We will consistently demonstrate good stewardship by analyzing information, prioritizing needs and managing our financial, physical and human resources to support our district's strategic commitments. We propose a 23-24 budget with a total revenue of $2,407,584 and expenditures of approximately $2,645,000. We are projecting to end fiscal year 24 with a fund balance of $632,970. The fund balance maximum for the school year 23-24 should not exceed $1,763,000. While MDE temporarily has set a maximum fund balance that should not exceed six months average operating expenditures, assuming a nine-month operating year. Our department's goal is really to work more towards that 14% of expenditures to be consistent with other funds in the district. So the temporary that I spoke about for the, the six months was put into place. Prior to the pandemic, we were on a three-month is what we had to do for, for our expenditures. And they expanded that to the six months and we're not sure how long. I don't know Val, if you've heard a timeframe at all, um, but right now we're operating with the fact that we have that six months ability. Due to uncertainty of meal participation, reduced reimbursements from federal and state sources with a free program versus free meals during the pandemic, uncertainty of NCEC meal programming and the above-mentioned expenses, it has been challenging to assess the program to project expenses and revenue for the following school year. We will continue to monitor our revenue expenses for the remainder of the school year based on the results for the end of the school year and any rate changes provided by the state or federal government. We would bring a revised budget to the board in the fall if we felt like it was necessary. I would like to take this time to publicly thank all of my staff too, for the amazing job that they do every day. Um, I know that there are challenges with sometimes being short on staff or as I had mentioned, products and things like that being unavailable and them needing to make quick changes. I know each one of them really hope they make a positive impact on every student each day, um, in their learning and beyond their day. Thank you. I open this for any questions that you have.
Thank you Stephanie. It's terrific. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, Ben?
All right, Stephanie, thanks. Appreciate that. The only constant is change over the last couple of years, right? When it comes to pandemic funding and now the state. So can you walk us through slide 14? If you look at local sources and then state, looking at the 23-24 budget, can you just help me understand? And the 22-23 at local at like 1.2 million and then for the next budget, it's 404. What, what are the differences there? Where, where does that come from?
I'll let Val take that.
So the difference is the, um, what's it called now? Free meals?
Yes.
For kids, yeah, not universal. So the local sources was all of the fees we were charging to families. And now that we're not charging that, the state and federal amounts are increasing to, I mean, obviously the state is taking on the, the biggest chunk of that, but that's, that's what's shifting. That is that free meal component. So really the local sources is any adult meals, um, any staff that choose to have lunch and any à la carte sales for the most part.
Okay, so the 23-24 would be assumed to fall under kind of the staff or à la carte. Is that kind of where that budget estimates coming from for the proposed budget?
Yeah, so the biggest part of that's à la carte for sure, um, and some catering, um. There's a handful of small things in there, but à la carte would be the biggest chunk of that.
And then the federal piece, obviously the state's not fully replacing the federal portion. That looks like that's actually going up from this year.
Yep, usually the federal rate increases slightly, um, and so that's why there's a, an anticipated increase for that. And then the state sources is obviously absorbing the rest of that. Um, and we don't know what that rate's going to be. So that was an estimate on our part, but, um, that's kind of why the, why it looks completely different than than this year.
Yeah, and that's what helpful. I was just going to add on the state line. Yeah, how you can see 21, 2021, it was 1,600. That's because of the pandemic, the federal payment, you know, kind of took over everything with that. And then each year it's increased and next year the state will be contributing a lot more.
Then one other question on slide 16, it says fund balance max. Can you just help me understand that again within the context of what we were talking about here?
Yep, so the, um, because this program is, um, considered a federal program, so it's over being at the federal level, there is a requirement in there that the, uh, child nutrition fund balance historically could not exceed three months of operating expenditures, assuming a nine-month operating year. So the, if you look in the 2021 column, that 585 is that original calculation. And then for fiscal 22, they actually temporarily have increased that to six months max because the rate of the program that was, um, run last year was higher and pretty much every child nutrition program in the state saw a pretty significant jump in their fund balance. And so they're giving districts basically some time to, um, thoughtfully spend that and adjust to kind of the new things that are happening. And so we, I would say three years prior, we exceeded the max fund balance and the state sends us a letter and says, how are you going to spend it down? You can't have this much. Um, so this is just showing that that's a ceiling that we're not supposed to go over. We're well within the range. We're actually, the 632 is less than the three-month range, so we're in a, in a good spot there. Is that helpful?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Jenny?
Thank you Stephanie, and also thank you for giving all the support to your, your staff. Um, I just had one question. Um, will that after-school snack program continue on then next year?
The plan is yes. I just verified with Erin. And I don't know if she'll be speaking on that at all. Um, but yes, that's the plan that it'll continue with the three elementaries and the middle school.
Middle school, okay. And then each year, do you just assess whether or not that can continue prior year?
So it's a, it's with the community school program. And so that's something that's through community ed and they have to evaluate the program. I think they qualify for a certain number of years and then once they get to the end of that cycle, then it would be evaluated again.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Nice. Jeff, did you have a question?
Yeah, thanks for your report. A couple of questions, I guess. Um, I know you commented maybe earlier on that, but, um, just as a general, um, can I don't know, blue sky or just a general comment of in the last couple of years, I mean, as far as trends, as far as food availability and prices going up, um, and you know, things available, things not available. Uh, do you see, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know what our new normal is, if anything is normal anymore. But what kind of comments do you have as far as his food is a commodity, kind of going up and then, you know, post-pandemic? Um, you know, what are, what are you seeing?
We've definitely seen, um, a shift in the different types of foods that are available. Like we kind of go through spurts, um, last year, which it didn't help because there was also the avian flu. We had issues with, you know, getting turkey products and things like that bird, you know, poultry and things. Um, you kind of see that shift, then we have to go into, okay, what products can we use? Maybe it's more cheese products like pizza and that kind of stuff. Well, then there ends up being a shortage in that. Um, one of the biggest things really is the impact of staffing and, um, companies that are manufacturing things and they have to look at cutting back and making changes on what they can produce for us. And we saw, um, really a big shift of them going away from maybe what types of things that they had for the schools, cutting back on the variety of things that we could get. And now they're reintroducing some of that stuff. Um, they're getting the staffing back, but also schools are open more so they can start bringing back some of those items. Um, whereas before, you know, it was kind of limited on where we might have eight choices of something. It was maybe more like four choices of something.
Yeah, thank you. So that kind of makes it a little bit more, um, harder for you in a sense, just to figure out what can you order, what's available, what's not going to be available, trying to predict, you know, what you can get, which can't.
Yeah, we work with also, um, we're part of a food buying group, a couple we for, we work with the Minnetoka School District and there's probably 12 other districts that we work with. So we go out to bid, that really helps us then, um, kind of get larger numbers and quantities because, you know, otherwise if wouldn't just Northfield was going to go out and try and do that, we couldn't compete and get the prices. So that helps us to get products in at a better rate. And then also the Minnesota School Food Buying Group, MSFBG is something that we belong to. And every year we bring in, um, products, manufacturers get to submit a request to try and, you know, receive the bid on that. And then we evaluate, is this a product that we want to use? And then we select that product and then that helps manufacturers know, you know, this is an item that we need to make sure is continued to be used in the schools because of the interest level with that. So those types of things have helped with it.
Okay, good questions. Anyone else question, comment? Robert?
Well, thank you as well and kudos to you and your team for working through these last few years of ups and downs and pricing and, uh, I guess my question is, have we, has with these large differences in numbers of meals served, has, has that affected our staffing going up and down and looking forward to next year? And are we able to fill these positions right now?
Well, that I can say, no, we've had a tough time. Um, right now the high school is operating. Normally they have 11 people staffed and we currently have six people. So they're really working tight. Um, you know, trying to fill those positions. We do have subs who are helping to kind of fill the need with that, but we have to make adjustments on what we are able to offer. Um, you know, just so kids can get through the line faster and those kind of things too, because that's a deterrent if the kids have to wait a long time. Um, and looking at what items they have. We're hoping next year we'll be fully staffed because we want to be able to introduce and keep all of the different opportunities that we have available for them at each level. Um, at the elementary level, you know, they have the main line, but they also get their, the choice of a pre-made salad. They get the choice of a turkey sandwich, the choice of a peanut butter bundle. And then you go to the middle school and we have different lines. Again, the middle school is running, um, they're down to staff. So we had actually, um, changed some of our, um, equipment. It was just kind of a flat top and we actually inserted cold and hot wells because we want to bring back the choice salad bar for them. And we're not able to do that right now because we're short on staff. So we're continuing to do the pre-made salads. So kids can walk through with that. And we're not able to do that right now because we're short on staff. So we're continuing to do the pre-made salads so kids can walk through with that. But, um, you know, they have the sub line, just all those different varieties and we want to be able to continue that. And then the high school again has more options. So each level you go to, there's various options. But yeah, we're, the staffing has been a challenge.
Good question. Anyone else? Hey, yes.
So I just wanted to take the opportunity to just really praise Stephanie's leadership. I think of all, all of our schools, all of our departments have had a lot of ups and downs since twenty-twenty. Uh, some things I want you to know about Stephanie and the Child Nutrition Department from the superintendent's seat is that, uh, Stephanie is very stewardly. She, uh, really emphasizes our core, our strategic commitment to stewardship. And you heard about it in the Minnetonka Food Buying Program. Only twelve schools in the state participate in that. That's a cooperative purchasing, uh, situation. Um, Stephanie, you could just keep going with one vendor because that's what most schools do, but no, that's not good enough. We're going to make sure that we can get the best for our money. And we have faced far better, uh, food shortage issues than other schools, far less food shortages than other schools because of this cooperative purchasing. And so that leads into that you've heard tonight too, that Stephanie and her team are innovative, that cooperative purchasing, again, not the norm. It's a, it is something that is and an innovation as well. You heard her talk about the different options and the kinds of equipment that they have purchased to be able to make the process go simpler with fewer people. And she's always looking at, how can I adjust the equipment I have so that our staff can be more efficient? Uh, she didn't even get to really talk too much tonight about farm to school. Stephanie has been a leader in making sure that students have locally sourced products and she's worked with a number of local farmers in the region to make sure that kids have that option on a regular basis. And she's talking budget tonight, but she should be commended for making sure that kids have an opportunity to eat things that are locally sourced and grown here. Uh, Stephanie is an amazing systems leader and she is the model of what we want in continuous improvement. So when you think about the different things that she's talked about, she's gone through several iterations of goal setting. Did we meet the goal? If we didn't meet the goal, how do we adjust? If we meet the goal, hooray, right? Let's try to get, get better. And then you heard a lot about the staffing issues and she is also the model of servant leadership. Because I'm guessing you served at two different schools today, probably, at least one.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so she rolls up her sleeves and a lot of people in that position could certainly say, I've got too much to do as the director. But every day she is right now filling in for people because they're short and because she wants to do good things for kids. So she's very modest and this has been a department that has been hit big time by staffing issues. And if you think about it, it's just short window to serve a lot of kids and they get it done every day and they get it done well. This program is far from the beefaroni days of the nineteen-seventies. So I get irritated when people criticize the work that this department does because if you look at the pictures, those were not stock photos. Those are things she took of our program. So I need to publicly congratulate Stephanie on her perseverance and just being a great systems leader and doing good work for kids. So thanks, Stephanie. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Erin Bailey will be presenting on the revised twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three and proposed twenty-three, twenty-four Community Education Fund budgets. Um, let's see, the revised budget will be an item for individual action at the next board meeting. The proposed twenty-three, twenty-four budget does not require any action, um, at this meeting. Welcome, Erin.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for having me this evening to, um, give feedback on the revisions for the current fiscal year's budget for the Community Education Department and then, um, share our budget for next fiscal year. So first, I of course like to start by reminding you of the principles of community education, which are, um, lifelong learning, maximizing community and school resources, maximizing, um, community and school facilities, promoting collaborations and partnerships and citizen involvement. And this is our summer brochure. I'm hoping you've all received it at your house or received it, um, when it arrived just before April seventh. Uh, we did open registration on April seventh and it has been steady stream of registrations ever since, which is outstanding. I also just want to touch base on the, and share a reminder of what programs do make up community education. And I picked a few as you read through this list that I'm going to highlight. Um, adult basic education that is held at the Northfield Community Education Center. It's the two classrooms that are right across the hallway from the office. We are seeing great attendance in that program, which, uh, right now, which is a little, um, bucking the trend, I would say, because typically when uh, employment is high, we see, uh, less attendance in adult basic education because people are employed. Um, we do have some really good partnerships right now. One is with Holden Farms, who is sending uh, a large number of their employees to adult basic education in our evening classes. And then we also, um, have a great partnership with the Carlton Food Recovery Network, which, um, is students who take food that was not served in dining halls in the evening and they package it in a food safe way. And they bring it both to the Northfield Community Education Center and to Greenville Park Elementary in the evenings and we distribute the food there. So this allows adults who are coming to adult basic education classes to have a meal. And then at the community education or, um, at Greenville Park Community School, it allows families to take home extra food. So some great things happening in adult basic education. In our Kid Ventures Program, Kid Ventures is our school age childcare program. So this happens at all three elementary schools before and after school. And then there's a summer component as well. Right now for this summer, we are taking in a hundred, we have capped it at a hundred and seventy-five students a day this summer. Pre-pandemic, we averaged a hundred and thirty students, or I shouldn't say we averaged, we topped out at a hundred and thirty students a day. So we are seeing a significant increase in that program, uh, and since, um, returning from the pandemic, which is just great as well. And then just to highlight a couple of our community partnerships, and of course, we, as you all know, they add such value to our programming and, and the work that we do and certainly help us increase the capacity for what we are doing. Um, just to highlight the Healthy Community Initiative is located, um, in some off, it has some of their office space at the Northfield Community Education Center. And so we do have the early childhood navigators onsite who help facilitate some home visits through the Parent Child Plus program. They help register students for, um, preschool and, you know, just help facilitate paperwork needs. Uh, we do also have a C cap navigator onsite at the Northfield Community Education Center. That is the Childcare County Assistance Program, um, and so helping those that need to access scholarships for either, um, care or preschool or school age care. This, this is a lengthy process. It's a lot of paperwork. And so having someone onsite that's able to help, um, navigate that paperwork and work besides families is truly helpful. Um, and then of course, the early childhood programs of, of the Community Education Department, those being all onsite at the Community Education Center, which is a truly amazing for the last three years. Those pictures that you see on this slide are all in the middle space. Um, so as a reminder, this is a partnership we have with the Minnesota Children's Museum, who have designed the space that was the, um, library or the media center in the former Greenville Park. And so we are about halfway done, um, with getting these, um, areas installed. And so our timeline for completion, we should have all but one area completed by the end of the school year. So it has really been fun to see, um, what children are doing in this indoor play space. Other exciting things that are taking place at the Northfield Community Education Center, we've seen steady increasing enrollment each year that we've now been in operation. So that's really exciting too. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. Um, as in the, as I get further in the presentation. In the recent caregiver, um, and parents experience survey, which I know will be shared with you if it hasn't already, the Northfield Community Education Center in that parent feedback had an average rating of four point six seven out of five, uh, which is outstanding and speaks so highly to the outstanding staff we have at the building who are extremely capable and build such strong relationships with those families. And then last that I'll mention, if you go on the district website and look under schools, we, um, with the help of Newger Communications, we have added the Northfield Community Education Center as a school site. So there is a spot. Um, there's still the community education tab, but there is also a spot for people to access exactly what is happening in that building. So then as I share, um, the fun, the budget revisions for this current fiscal year, um, as you may remember, a couple of the driving forces here, and as you may remember, when I presented this budget last year, we did not account for any federal funds, um, when this budget was originally, um, adopted last year at this time. Uh, we, it was not clear how long those federal funds would continue and at what rate that they would continue. And so those were not included. We have continued to receive some federal funds this year, which you will see in an upcoming slide, not at the same rate we had received the previous year. Um, but that and the high levels of participation in all program areas are the main uh, drivers behind these budget revisions. Cause as you will see, there's an increase in the fund balance. And again, those are the main drivers. Just so you have an understanding, um, and as a reminder, community education has four funds and those, um, while they all make up our entire budget, money cannot be mixed or moved among those funds. So in the general community education funds would be the, the general operation of the Community Education Office, driver education, uh, Kid Ventures or our school age childcare program, Early Ventures, which is our birth to five licensed childcare program, recreation, youth enrichment, adult enrichment, um, youth development, and then some of the grants and things like that with, that we receive. ECFE is very clear. It's ECFE, which is early childhood family education, along with, um, some dollars for home visiting. School readiness includes hand-in-hand preschool, along with our pathway one and pathway two scholarship dollars. And then our Bridges to Kindergarten program and Unreserved is essentially our, uh, early childhood screening dollars. So as you can see in our revised budget, we are, um, projecting an ending fund balance of nine hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars. So the community, um, education budget goals are to have an overall fund balance that equals fourteen percent of the community education's operating funds, which is similar to what the board has designated for the general fund, um, which this is approximately four hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars. And then we want to achieve this with all four of those funds having a positive balance. So the slides you, or the four funds you saw on the previous slide, those are the, what we are looking to always have a positive balance on. So if you look back to the previous slide, you will see we are achieving both of these goals. This is a little history of the community education, um, fund balance. So community education budget is heavily impacted by the economy. Our revenue, as you will see in an upcoming slide, is largely dependent on fees. Uh, and so due to that, you can see, especially in the last couple of years through the pandemic, it has been a little bit of a ride of what our fund balance has, has done. As we start to look at the FY twenty-four budget, I, these are the assumptions that were made. Um, slight increase in revenue and fees, uh, based on the activity that we are doing this current year. Then, uh, federal childcare stabilization grants will end right now, um, June of twenty-twenty-three. So these are the federal funds that we have been receiving over the last two years. With these funds have been given to, um, childcare sites throughout Northfield and throughout the state in an effort to not have them closed through the pandemic when many sites saw a significant decrease in attendance. The childcare stabilization grants work in the money that we receive, seventy percent are paid to our staff based on the hours they had worked in the previous month. And thirty percent come to the organization to, um, continue operating. So there is a bill at the legislature that would continue these into the future, but as you will see, that is not accounted for because at this time, those are projected to end in June. Then of, um, the continuation of the pathway one and pathway two early learning scholarships. Um, these are scholarships awarded by the state to, um, programs that are three or four star parent aware rated. Our programs are four star parent aware rated, uh, at the Northfield Community Education Center. Pathway one scholarships are awarded to the family and the family then can take that scholarship and attend a preschool of their choice. That is again, three or four star parent aware rated. Pathway two funding is awarded to the organization and then the organization awards those funds to students that have chosen to enroll in the program. Since I did this budget, we have received notification that we are receiving our pathway two funds again for the next two fiscal year. So for FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five, it's just not accounted because I think we found out on Friday. So, but that's exciting to have that continued. And then of course, we have other several grant applications. In the expenditures, so we have again accounted for the appropriate increase in salaries, wages and insurance. And then also the appropriate staff support for all children. And what I mean by this, um, especially in our licensed childcare center, uh, the Department of Human Service, DHS determines ratios in that area. So for example, in an infant classroom, it's one staff to four infants in a toddler, that's one to seven. And in a preschool, it's one to ten. I think we all know that that doesn't always necessarily play out that way. Sometimes we have still, still children who, um, need additional support than, than that, or where it's just not quite possible to have one adult to ten, four-year-olds. Um, so some, we do, um, account that sometimes we are not, um, following exactly those ratios because we are here to support children. And then lastly, we've added, um, a section of hand-in-hand preschool, and this is the addition of a two-day-a-week preschool section. We, uh, continue to see our enrollment in hand-in-hand increase and we have turned students away the past two years. So due to this interest, we are adding this section starting in the fall. Um, this then, oh, that is bumped up a little high. Sorry about that. These are our revenue sources for next fiscal year. Um, as I mentioned in the previous slide, that are, most of our, um, revenue does come from fees. And this is the slide that does reflect that, um, for you, just for your information, when you see other, that is, um, the payment we see from, receive annually from the city of Northfield for administering the recreation program. It also includes sponsorships for Little League or other programs. Um, and brochure, when we sell ad revenue in the back of our brochure and things like that is what makes up those other sources. So here is our revenue summary, um, for the last couple of years. Again, it highlights the federal funds that we have received. Um, and again, with the planned that those will not be continuing, um, in the next fiscal year. And then obviously, um, the local sources is the fees and the things you saw on the previous slide. Our levy and state aid, those are, um, made up by, those are, um, in-state statute or a form, funding formula is established by the Minnesota State Legislature. Most of those formulas are based on census counts. And so, um, when you see the slight fluctuation year to year in that levy or state aid number, um, often has to do with those formulas that are again, put in place by the state legislature. And then here of course is our revenue, or our, excuse me, our expenditure summary. As you talk about, when you do the, uh, general fund budget every year, we are in a people business and that is certainly reflected on this slide. Most of what we are doing is employing staff that are doing great things for kids. You will also see over the last couple of years, so the, an increase in purchase services. Uh, this is truly due to an increase in our number, uh, of people participating in our programs. So some of the programs we are contracting with agencies or businesses to deliver those programs or we're paying, um, those programs based on the number of participants we have. And we have seen a significant increase in programming, um, in the last two years. And so that is, is what's driving the increase in purchase services. You also see kind of a, a blip in the capital and equipment line, and that is truly due to the work that is happening in the middle space at the Northfield Community Education Center. We are making purchases of the, um, excellent play structures and other features that are going into those spaces. So that is really what you're seeing as the, as the blip, um, in this current year. So then here is the financial, um, summary. As you can see, we are projecting, I, I am projecting a reduction in fund balance for next year. Um, by, uh, a one hundred and thirty thousand, ninety-three dollars. Um, this does allow us to continue to meet our budget goals, both the fourteen percent fund balance, um, and each fund balance having a positive balance, as you can see, um, that is all reflected on this slide. So that would end our fund balance next year at seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. Of course, there are a few variables to what I just shared with you. One of course is actual program enrollments. Um, as I mentioned, being, um, heavily tied to economic factors, those are, of course, hard to predict for next year. As is fee collection, although I will say we made a, uh, move to a different software system about a year and a half ago, and it has made a tremendous difference, um, in fee collection and in the fact that it is much more user-friendly for families. And so automatic bill pay was able to be set up. There's a much better dashboard for families to be able to see where they're at financially in our program. So that variable is, we're seeing some reduction in that variable, which is great. And then of course, as I mentioned, there's numerous legislative bills that would impact funding or have an increase, um, to our expenses. So one would be those childcare stabilization grants, um, not only in whether or not they are continued, but how they are continued. So I mentioned that they are currently seventy percent is paid, um, in staff wages and thirty is paid to the organization. However, that may or may not continue and whatever that mayor split may or may not be, would have a huge impact. There's also some bills, um, regarding our There's also some bills regarding hourly wage for staff that are in the legislature, those would have some impacts. There are, the legislature is also talking about the C cap rate, which is again, the childcare, the county childcare program reimbursement rate, which would bring Minnesota up significantly from where it is currently, but it would certainly have a, an impact on what those who of those providers who accept C cap dollars in what the, the state is then able to cover in what those families are experiencing in childcare costs. And I always have reflected here, just the Greenville Park Community School because this is a federal grant. The funds for this grant are in the O one fund, which is the general fund and the community education is the O four fund. So as you know, those are separate funds. So I just want to take a minute to reflect kind of the funding we have for this year. We last year ended the first three years of our second six year grant. If you can do that, that kind of addition, we had a five year grant, we was followed up by a six year grant. We had to spend down to nothing at the end of those three years. So one hundred and twenty four thousand four hundred and eighty nine dollars is our grant award from its original grant award. And now we could carry over as we need to. We did, Rice County did is through the Healthy Community Initiative, did receive some significant funding from Ignite. And so we are the beneficiary, as many out of school time programs are in Rice County for some of those funds as well. And then, as you all here know, we also expanded the community school sites in this past year. And so originally we had the Greenville Park Community School and the Middle School Youth Center, which Greenville Park, as Stephanie also mentioned in her, provides after school programming, programming. And then it does provide evening programming on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And then the Middle School Youth Center provides after school programming as well. Our expansion sites this year were the Bridgewater Community School and the Spring Creek Community School. They have provided after school programming Monday through Thursday since the start of the school year. They each had a night of evening programming too, until we had to pause that about midway through the year just due to staffing challenges too, and, and just wanting to make sure we had enough staff to keep it all running in a, in a effective way. And so we had evening programming for half the year. Then you can just see at these program sites, we are doing STEM, homework help, arts and music, youth leadership, physical activity, counseling programs, health and wellness, literacy, community service and other cultural programs. So just, this didn't it looked different on my slide. Sorry about this. I hope it looks clearer on yours like. This just reflects the stu, the, the attendance we have had at these programs since the start of the school year. So I can read it to you if that makes it better. Bridgewater Community School, seventy six students have attended fifty plus hours of programming. Three hundred and thirty five students have had at least attended one time. Greenville Park Community School has forty six students with fifty plus hours, three hundred students attending at least one time. Spring Creek Community School has forty three students attending fifty plus hours with a hundred and sixty three students attending at least one time. And the Middle School Youth Center has had thirty seven students attending fifty plus hours with a hundred and fifty nine students attending one plus hour. This is a significant increase over the previous year. If you remember, we ran it in a little different model. And it wasn't quite as open to all students. We've seen significant increase in student participation and these attendance hours were as of April seventeenth. And so we still have till May twenty fifth to continue to increase these numbers, which is really great. And so Jenny, just to your question about snacks. So we do provide snacks every day after school to every student who attends. And if they do qualify for free or reduced price lunch, we are able to either provide that snack free of charge with Stephanie being federally reimbursed or at a reduced rate with again, Stephanie being. And then if this, if it is a, a student who does not receive free or pretty reduced price lunch, we do cover those costs with the program because part of what we wanted to eliminate when we moved to the community school model is that all students look the same in this program. And so no one would know kind of eligibility or other requirements. And so we have, we provide snacks and there's, and all students look the same in their club choice, in their snack choices and in everything else that goes on in that program. So with that, I'll take any questions or comments.
Great presentation. Are there any comments or questions? Robert?
Well, thank you, Erin. As, as someone who has a privilege of being in the N C E C multiple times a week, I can, I can attest to what an amazing atmosphere there is there and how exciting and vibrant it is with the, with the, that new mid indoor play area coming together. It is, it is very popular amongst the users, the early education users. A couple of questions. I see on our enrollment report later tonight, we're looking at a, a fifty percent increase in early, early education at N C E C. Is this something that's just cyclical each year? Or is that unusual?
So the enrollment report that you, that is in front of you, it reflects our early childhood special education students. So it doesn't reflect our general education students. So we can collect. I can't remember the term Val is going to tell me to use, but our, what we can recollect as in payments from the state are for early childhood special education students and our general education students are fee based students. Cheryl and Sarah are here to talk more about this tonight too, but I think we are following a, a trend in which special education numbers continue to increase. And whether we are still seeing the effects of a pandemic or what, what families chose to do in that time. So we are continuing. And I think we also have done a, and this is kudos to also many of our computer, community partners, whether that be the medical field, the library, YMCA in identifying students and ma, and making referrals. Because I think we know if we can address some of these potential concerns before students enter kindergarten, we have the best chance of having them ready for kindergarten and launching them into a successful K twelve career. And so what you're seeing is a higher level of special education students. We have a high level in evaluation right now. You, we always see an uptick in the year. So that's also part of it true because students that will come, we will see students that we haven't seen before in the fall. And so some of those might matriculate into evaluation throughout the school year. And so I don't know if we've been quite this high. Never been this high, but we, we always see a trend in this direction at this time of year. But we're a little higher than the trend. And I think Cheryl and Sarah will tell you more.
Sounds good. Thank you. And, and since I'm asking about staffing tonight, I guess I, how is, how is staffing working and particularly, I guess, early ed and recreation programs?
Sure. So staffing in the Northfield Community Education Center very, has been very, very stable this year. And I'm going to especially say in a childcare, yeah, Nat says I shouldn't even say that out loud in our childcare center, but that I will say childcare stabilization grants are an impacting force of that because that is essentially increasing staff wages from what it, you know, what our baseline wages. So this has a huge impact. We are retaining staff in early ventures where other childcare staff are seeing turnover, closing rooms and really, really struggling with this. So I feel extremely, extremely fortunate for what we are, have done there. And I, I want to also say that there are factors like stabilization grants that certainly play into that. In our school age care sites, so at Kid Ventures, we did have to cap this year due to the staffing we had in the fall. And then we've added as we've been able, but we have operated as a waitlist in that, at all three sites for most of the year. And then recre, summer recreation, I, we are in need of staff in that program. And I, you know, I think those are shorter time period in the summer, you're looking at six to eight weeks for most of those programs. So whether that's part of the factor, we have looked at wages and things in this too. But if you know people who would like to work in recreation this summer, we are certainly still hiring.
Any other questions? Jenny?
All right. Thank you, Erin. And also thank you for providing all the support to your staff and your team members. I have a few questions, but first I just want to mention that all the years that my kids have been involved with the community ed programs. We've always, well, the kids have enjoyed it, but I've really enjoyed it because of how streamlined everything is run. And in fact, I, I normally have problems filling out parent surveys. I just, I try hard, but your surveys, and I'm not sure, you know, with them out, but I've always made sure to fill those out just because of the, I, I was just blown away at the experience. The professionalism and the information and everything, you know, was done really well. And so I've made sure to, to fill out those surveys.
Thank you. That's great feedback.
With that in mind though, could you explain how that programming is chosen from year to year? Both the adult and the youth kind of recreational programming choices?
Sure, absolutely. There's a couple of different ways. Some programs are longtime favorites and we've been running them a lot. And if they continue to see good enrollment, we continue with them. So we always analyze each year how enrollment did with programs in the previous year. So if it didn't see a lot of enrollment or if it's been declining enrollment or lack of enrollment, that would be one we would certainly potentially sunset. And then vice versa, if it's been a long time attracted lots of enrollments, we would continue with that. In those surveys, we do ask for additional suggestions of programming that people would like to see. We also do that at the school sites. And so we often, whether it be elementary, middle school or high school, asking students what they would like to see. In our adult programs, we typically add a question at the end about some, if there is something that they feel is missing or would like to see. And then we also get people who offer programming who just contact us and, you know, are wanting us to add their program or class to our brochure. And so we usually vet that out if we, do we have programming that is similar to that? Does it feel like it would feel, fit a niche here? So some of it is people who just generally reach out in that way because there are organizations who provide programs to community ed or school districts. And so they're often kind of soliciting to add more communities to their programming base. Does that make sense?
Yes. And then also, do you happen to know the number of students that participated in the programs last year that were not enrolled in our district as students?
I don't know that right off hand, but I think I could pull that for you.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a question regarding community schools too. I know from my research, it seems like not many schools, school districts across Minnesota receive the full service community school grant. Can you just kind of explain, you know, why we have been receiving it?
Yeah.
How that works?
Yep, absolutely. So what we have is not a full service community school grant, but it's a twenty first century community learning center grant. We continue to watch in the legislature as these full service community school grants continue to evolve and kind of take shape in what those look like and will we be eligible? So Greenville Park is funded by a twenty first century community learning center grant, which is federal funds allocated to the state that then essentially the state sets up a awarding process and you apply. And that is how you get that. So we had that for five years, we reapplied and were awarded it for the, another six years. So that's where we're in our fourth year of the second, the six years. Then Bridgewater and Spring Creek are, are currently funded through American Rescue Plan funds that this, that the district had. And there was a stipulation that twenty percent of those funds had to be used towards out of school time programming. We had for several years received requests from those two schools to have a model love community school programming similar to what Greenville Park does. Of course, it's tweaked a little bit for each school building. So that was the, how the decision was made to use those funds. So those, there were two years of funding. So this is the first and those funds need to be used up by the end of next fiscal year. And then we'll be looking at those fully, full service community school grants to see how we might be able to continue those efforts.
Okay. Is there, what, what type of stipulations are there for that full service part? Because I, I tried to make sense of it and it was really tough.
So we, I think we probably meet most of them, a lot of them have to do, you know, about the hours that you're open beyond the school day. If there's other community partners involved, which we do, you know, we're bringing in lots of community partners. They also want to usually have a health and or dental component. And so you're, which we do at Greenville Park, Health Finders does provide dental health checkups to students there. And then there's usually some components about the demographics of your community. You know, poverty, demographics, racial demographics, things like that. So those are, I think, are the, the, what most of those grants have kind of most closely looked at.
Thank you.
Great questions. Jeff?
Yeah, Erin, thank you for your presentation and all your work with your staff. Appreciate all you guys, all the stuff that you could do. On slide ten, revenue summary, and I don't know, maybe I missed it, maybe you commented on that. But the zero on from the federal aid, that number you just don't have yet, or is it something?
So we're not, this is where we're not anticipating any, any federal aid for next year. Because these are the, the essentially where the childcare stabilization grants and any pre, some, there was also summer preschool funds that we would be eligible for. These are all expected to sunset in June. And so again, unless the legislature would make a decision that we, that is going to be continued, at this point, we would be seeing the end of those in June. And so that's why we're not anticipating any of that federal aid for next fiscal year.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Erin. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Fadi. And thanks, Erin. Thanks for your leadership and what's, I think, really an amazing community resource. I appreciate having you here.
Thank you.
Just to Jeff's question, so that on slide ten, the two oh nine, is that what we currently receive in child stabilization?
Yeah, that's what I, so that is what it accounts for what we've received so far. And my best estimate is what we will continue to receive for the rest of this year. So they have been slowly decreasing the amount each month in an effort to prepare everyone for what the, what might be the, the next reality. And so it is what we have received in, like, like I said, my best estimate for what we'll receive in the remaining months of this fiscal year.
And then another question, talking about increased enrollment, has that been both kind of in the adult and youth side?
Yeah, that's actually been throughout all program areas. So it's been, in recreation has seen significant increase in, increase in programming. Everything's probably a little bit heavier on the youth side because we offer more in the youth area. But and then, and then the same in youth and adult and record, enrichment. And then, as I mentioned, our school age care numbers continue to increase, which would all be youth, obviously.
Do you anticipate kind of that same trend to hold for the next? Well, I mean, it's best you can predict.
Yes, I, I think so. I mean, I, if I'm going to be honest, I'm amazed that the significant increase since the pandemic, I mean, we were hopeful we would return to pandemic numbers, but it's been a significant increase even since then.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Thanks so much, Erin. Stella.
Thanks.
And next we have Director of Special Services Cheryl Hall and Assistant Director of Special Services Sarah Pratt. And they, they will be presenting a special education staffing update. No board action is required at this meeting. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity speak to you this evening and to provide some information, especially during this time where we are having a priorities based budget process. And we, as special education is part of that, we want to make sure that you have an understanding of our special education projections, how we do that, that process, the mandates that are behind that, and then our staffing levels and what we are projecting is what our staffing levels are needed for our services for next year. And so our purpose tonight is to share that data and to help you increase your understanding of the requirements of our workload analysis and special education projections, align our, our special education budgeting process with strategic commitments of learner outcomes and equity. And requi, and then we also are looking at a possible increase in our, our licensed and possibly non licensed staffing. Sarah is going to talk to you a little bit about the requirements behind this.
Thank you. So as Cheryl said, one of our purposes for the evening is to help increase understanding of basically how we figure out what our staffing needs are. And one of those pieces is the Minnesota rule and our school board policy around workload and caseload. And for students who receive special education services in a special education setting for less than sixty percent of their school day, the district has a school board policy that basically says that we will look at workload analysis. So in addition to looking at the number of students we serve, there's a number of different factors that go into workload analysis. And that includes student contact minutes. So how much stu, service students actually receive. It includes all of the due process requirements such as writing IEPs, progress reporting, evaluations, indirect services, a lot of different pieces to that. Case management duties such as communication and collaboration with other staff members that are required, provision of accommodations and modifications and collaboration with other staff to make sure that those services are being provided. And then travel time for some of our itinerant staff. So when we look at workload, we're not only looking at the number of students we serve, but in addition, a, a significant but in addition, a significant amount of work that goes on in addition to the services provided to make sure that we are, are meeting state and federal law. And then also something that has been discussed quite a bit through our budget prioritization process is the maintenance of effort. And that basically states that we are required to spend the same amount from year to year in special education, that we are not allowed to decrease our expenditures, except for a few specific cases. What cases which include if we have staff who retire and we are resigning and we are able to fill those positions with staff who maybe have less, less experience and are less expensive to replace. Or if we have a decrease in enrollment of children with disabilities, which in Northfield we are not having currently. We are, as Aaron mentioned, our early childhood numbers have gone up and we are seeing that phenomenon as they move into the elementary level. And so not only are we having a significant number of students coming into elementary, but they go from a half day in preschool to a full day in kindergarten. So, and then also if we have a child as part of a high cost program, if they move or leave the district, age out or no longer in need. So, but that's a pretty significant excess cost. And I don't think we currently have any students that would necessarily meet that requirement. And then just want to review with you a few things that special services has done this school year to try and fulfill some of our stewardship responsibilities. And as you know, we've had some unfilled educational assistant positions during the school year. And so when we have had, that's primarily been at our secondary level. So when we've had increased needs come up at some of our other buildings, we've shifted, shifted some of those allocations to cover needs as they arise in other areas of the district. So we've, we've done that rather than adding positions in one building, we'll shift unfilled allocations to another building. We have really worked hard at our secondary levels to increase student independence and reduce dependence on adults. And we've done that by increasing adult skill with assistive technology so that we're able to utilize more of our technological resources for students. So maybe they can listen to tests being read on their iPads versus having an adult read that to them, which is really much more realistic of what they're going to experience when they leave the high school setting. So we've really focused some efforts on increasing independence. And then we've also, it's a, it's a team effort across the district. We have shifted staff as needed. For example, this year, we did not have any students in our low incidence program at the middle school. And so we shifted that teacher to the high school for increased staff numbers there rather than hiring or trying to add staff at the high school. We, we make those temporary shifts as our student projections kind of shift. And then you can see some of the other pieces that we've done as well. We have very sought after positions that we have in our district for licensure. We have teacher of the visually impaired and we also have a teacher of deaf and hard of hearing. Many districts have to kind of go out and search for those resources. We are very lucky to have those licensure areas employed in the schools, but we don't always have full time positions available for them for their allocation. So we're able to sell some of their services to other districts. And we're also able to reallocate some of their time to teach some other sections to help with some of the workloads at the high school and middle school. I'm just trying to think some of those other pieces. We are also utilizing region 10 for some resources. We have really worked hard. And I think there's been some information presented in previous meetings about what we, our participation in the setting three special education program called the BEST Project, behavior education through teaching and strategy, through strategies and teaching. And that has allowed us to reduce our referrals to our setting for programming in the areas of students with emotional behavior disabilities. And so anytime we can keep students in the district, it's providing special ed services in their least restrictive environment. And it's typically a less expensive option for, for education of those students. We also have worked with the region to have staff trained internally to provide safety care training, which reduces our costs for having our staff go out to other districts or other resources for that training. We've got group buys. We, we try to do software curriculum so we get a lower cost through our regional participation in the Infinity Tech project as well. So those are just a number and some examples of some of the stewardship pieces that we have experienced. We also actually have, this year, we start the, we start the projections early in February. We continue to revisit those projections. And we have been able, through that revisiting of projections and kind of shifting some of those allocations, to go this year with, without filling a .5 occupational therapy position and a .5 early childhood special ed position, in part because of one of those bullets. We've had our birth to three teachers and our early childhood special ed coordinator who have really stepped in to help with some of those evaluation processes. So. Didn't know where you went.
Yeah, right here. All right. So this is an overview of our, our leadership and our licensed staff. I, I failed to put in our educational assistants. I'll address that in a moment. But we have myself and Sarah Pratt as our leaders in the, in the department. We have an ECSE coordinator at the early childhood special ed level. She's on a teacher on special assignment doing that. And that allows her to also pick up some of those evaluations and, and other duties to organizing all those referrals and helping staff. She also works as the mentor teacher for any new staff that come in onboard with us. Behavior and autism specialist, BCBA is a, is a board certified behavior analyst. She's also a special education teacher who works across the district. She does our restricted procedures, training of the safety care. She also supports in all of our programs, our high needs programs in autism and, and behavior, helping teachers to make plans, do evaluations, carry out their programs. And, and she's also one of the trainers on the region for the BEST Project and for other training. We have other staff members that are listed there as well. Our early childhood special ed staff, we have 8.6 staff, elementary 26.3 special educators, middle school 9.5 special educators, high school 11.4. Itinerant is people that, that serve across the district in positions like physical therapy, occupational therapy. AT is our assistive technologist, who is also one of our OTs. Vision impaired specialists, our deaf and hard of hearing teacher and our physical and other health disabilities teacher who serves the entire district. We have other positions such as our admin assistant. We have a due process clerical and a psychometrist that this year that is working with our early childhood special ed program because we don't have a school psych on site this year. We will have a school psych. We have been able to hire a school psychologist intern for next year for the NCEC. We will, so we will not have to pay for the contract, which is a lot more expensive than our regular contract for a, a school psychologist. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. And I just listed some other areas that special services is responsible for. What Sarah mentioned, how we go about our, our workload analysis and determining what we need in our district for staffing. I've listed there the number of students that are enrolled currently in each of our, our programs at each building. And you can see the numbers there. The one piece that was brought up earlier is yes, our NCEC numbers of 88 students currently, that's birth to five that we have currently in our programs. We expect that we will stay at a, we're projecting that number for beginning in the fall. And, and we have seen that's the highest number that we have seen in starting a school year. And then also Bridgewater is 95. Greenville Park has 94 special education students. Spring Creek is a little lower, as you know. Spring Creek has been declining in their enrollment. And, and we are also seeing a little bit lower numbers there. But in that number is some of our highest needs programs. So our low incidence program is there and also two class, two classrooms that serve neurobiological students that are on the autism spectrum and other disabilities such as that. Middle school 126, that's a little bit lower than this, this current year. And then high school, you're, you're seeing, we're seeing 171 students that, that are projected for the beginning of the fall. That is considerably more. We are seeing the incoming eighth grade group is double of what the 12th grade group is leaving, the number of students that are leaving in 12th grade. So that is, we're going to see that bubble for a few years as that group moves through and as students come up. And we're just not going to see the other, other groups of students. Their, their numbers are just not, it's not going to balance out to have a lower, a lower number of, of students with special needs at the high school level. Our ALC stays around nine to 12 students, about that. And then of course, portage is, is being reduced. It's going away. But we have 25 students currently in special education in the portage program. And at this time, we don't know where they're going to enroll. And so there, we know that it's, it's K12. It's those 25 are spread out K12. And so we don't know where those impacts are going to be quite yet. But we'll keep an eye on that and we'll have to adjust if, if there's a need. So we, we try, what we try to do, like Sarah said, is in that, in the early time of, in the early part of the year, we're trying to set it up. So we are at the lower part of caseloads. And so that caseloads can grow over the year that we have capacity for caseloads to grow over the school year to that higher level as, as the year goes on, because we always are identifying new students and we have students move in during the school year. So we, we, we plan for that in order to have some room for growth. And then, and so we don't get in a point to where at the beginning of next year or the, or in the middle of, of next year, we're having to add staff and trying to find staff. And we all know that there is a shortage of special educators in the pool. So we have approximately 689 students that are anticipated in K12 for, for next year. And that's about 18% of our enrollment in the district. It's a little bit, it's around the same as the, as the state level. It's a little bit higher than we've, we've historically been. But we are seeing that trend across not only the state of Minnesota, but the nation as well. So we are projecting our, our needs there. Whether or not we have an increase or a decrease that's needed in, in each area. Bridgewater, I'll note there in that second column that we are looking at needing a, a new, new program at Bridgewater. And that is to meet our students coming in that are coming into K. We have a, a group of students that are on the autism spectrum or have neurobiological needs. And Spring Creek is not in the, has, does not have the capacity to serve those students. We need to add a program. And then that, that program would end up meeting the needs of students that would normally go to Bridgewater anyways. And so they stay in their neighborhood school, which is also best practice for including students with special education needs. And then that also will have an increase of educational assistant needs in, in that program. Greenville Park also is, is seen with that influx of kindergartens, kindergarten students coming in with special needs. We are seeing an influx in our program for students with that cognitive disabilities as well as our behavioral services program, EBD program at that, at that level too. Those students, we are, we believe that we can share a staff member between those two programs to be able to provide better staff to student, staff to student caseload and ratio. And the middle school, we, as you approved in the budget process, you've already approved that we could transfer three educational assistants to a, a special education licensed teacher. That is included there. And, and then that would just be the transfer. And then the high school, we would do the transfer. But then we also, because of that higher need, that we have almost a full caseload coming and with some higher needs, that a 1.3 increased FTE at the high school. Portage, of course, is minus one. And so the overall increase would be a 1.8 FTE increase to the budget for those needs. And in the EA, Educational Assistant PCA column, we are actually with, including the, the reductions of the six EAs between the middle school and high school, we are also looking at, that's an overall reduction in EA time that we need across the district. Part of that decrease comes from the NCC. Even though our numbers are going up, we do have a decrease in our, our self-contained classroom, serving EBD students at that level. And so we are not going to have a need for as many educational assistance in that program. So while there's more students coming in that are, do have special needs, they, they do have more mild needs than, than what we have had in the past, in the past few years. And we have such a large group of children going from pre-K to K. We have 55 children going, going to kindergarten that have special needs. So that's a large, large group there. So in that, what I wanted to show too here is the ratios in our, in each of our programs. Where I've highlighted in yellow, if we were to maintain our, our current FTE, all of those areas in yellow would be over what we would say for our caseload or workload. So that's why we're asking for that increase of 1.8 FTE. The, in the green is why I wanted to highlight that that would be the addition of the Bridgewater program that we have five students coming in. And that is a program where there's a cap of eight students in that, in that, that can be in that program with one teacher. So that's where we would start with that. And so that's where we're at with those numbers. And those, again, these are our starting points for our caseload in our ratios because we know that all of our, for the, most of the time, our ratio, our ratios do change over the year as we identify new staff, or new students, excuse me, new students. Just wanted to hit upon our cross subsidy. We've had a lot of talk about that. We know that there's a lot of advocacy going on at both the state and the, and the federal level for special education funding. We're hoping that changes. We hope that in a, you know, a few short weeks, we will understand what that, that will be. But I just wanted to show where we get our, where our expenditures are. And then where is the state aid that comes in, our federal aid? And then Medicaid reimbursement is the MA billing that we are able to do for services such as speech language therapy, physical therapy, occupational therapy, and nursing services. And that's what we bring in. As you can see, we have, we have increased our MA billing capacity over the last few years. The number that you see under fiscal year 23, currently $325,000 is what we've currently taken in so far this year. We expect our number to be closer to what it was in fiscal year 22. I do want you to note though, that because of the pandemic, they did increase the percentage of reimbursement to 57% currently for those dollars. And next year, we're expecting that go back down to 50%. So it'll look probably closer to what we did in fiscal year 21. So we, but those dollars must be spent directly to offset the costs of special education services for students. So those are additional dollars that come in because of the services that we are providing to students. So you can see the cross subsidy there dips down just a little bit over for, for this year, which is, that's good. And if we do get the funding that comes in for cross subsidy, that will help the general fund budget as well. I wanted to bring that up because I want you to understand that there is a new, there's some finance changes that are coming that, that we think that will benefit and we're being told will benefit the district. If we change some of the ways that we're using our funds, our federal funds versus our state funds and what we put in there for, for those. In 2020, the state, the legislature removed the special education cap on the amount of expenditure increases we can have from one year to the next. With that cap removed, it allows districts to increase their expenditures in special education. But we also can move now, because of that, we could move staff such as Sarah and, and, and my salary from federal, federal. and and my salary from federal federal funding to state funding to be funded under state funding without reaching that cap. And so, and we are higher costs and as well as some of our other, like our admin assistant that I had pointed out earlier, our admin assistant or a clerical help that we have could also be funded under state funding, which we were not, they were not reimbursable before under that. This would allow us to take tuition billing and move that under federal. And because tuition billing is unreimb, what has been unreimbursable by under state funding, we could now pay that with federal dollars, and that would be a hundred percent reimbursable. And I'll show you in a minute how how much we we spend in tuition billing. Tuition billing is for all those students that live here in the district that go elsewhere and receive special education services. And that includes our students that go to the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative as well. So this could be a one-time benefit to reducing our cross subsidy even more. And the timing of this, if we get the additional dollars also from the state, this could be a very, a very good opportunity for us to really reduce that cross subsidy. And then as we move forward. So this is an example of what what we do now and then what we would, we could do in twenty-three, twenty-four that would help us with balancing these funds. So currently we have what we, the positions that we fund under federal, they're listed there. We also do, besides these positions, we also do use our federal funds to offset the benefits of our our staff as well. We pay for some of the benefits from our staff. And the state funding right now, under the tuition billing is is a little over a million dollars for students that go elsewhere. And that that includes those students that go elsewhere, students that are open enrolled to other districts and receive services, or they go to care and treatment for mental health services. And they're there for some, some of our students are there for just a portion of the year. Some students are in special facilities for many years, but their parents continue to live here. And so that's where the the dollars flow from our district to for for those costs. The hundred percent reimbursement in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we would then be moving up to our, up to the the top of our our federal allocation, which is approximately seven hundred eighty thousand dollars for special education tuition billing. So we, and then we would move our other currently funded positions, such as the Director of Special Services, Assistant Director, Admin Assistant, our Accounting Generalist, and our Due Process at ECSE Clerical. Those could all be moved under her, under our state special education funding and receive approximately fifty-five percent reimbursement on those. That will increase our our state funding that will come in for those, for our our services. So that offsets. So the, right now, the tuition billing, the one million, one hundred thousand is not covered. It's covered by the general fund. It cannot be paid by special education dollars. So you can see that that's that seven hundred eighty thousand of that comes back to us through the cross subsidy, through lowering the cross subsidy and and impacting the general, the general fund. Are there disadvantages or risks to doing this? The one piece that that has been pointed out is that, yes, it it would increase our level of maintenance of effort and that risk of not being able to reduce the budget in the future. However, we talk about, today, we talked about if we have retirements, we have changes in students, let's say that our special education numbers now after the pandemic and after if we have enrollment dropping, if our special ed enrollment also drops over time, then we could do some just right kind of adjustments to our our spending. And we could, you know, but we have to watch that carefully and we have to adjust carefully as we go. The reimbursement also is not immediate. It's not current year. It is based on the prior year spending. So we wouldn't see that that dollar change. The estimate is that we would break even. But I'm also thinking that if we do get the extra dollars for the cross subsidy from the legislature, that we will do better than breaking even. So that's why, again, this year might be the year to do something like this in that. I also wanted to point out that we do have a Special Ed Advisory Council that meets a couple times a year. We share information like I shared tonight with our Special Ed Advisory Council. It's made up of teachers and parents and community members. And and in that, we also try to get their input on on what what would they like to see, what would, what direction would they like to go? One of the pieces that has been a focus this year is the inclusion activities and being more inclusive of all our students in more of our programming. They'd like to see, they would love to see they have inclusion specialists added to the to the district. And to to really work on that accessibility of our students accessing the general curriculum and and increasing our our teachers' understanding of how to do that. One of the pieces that was shared also was that, and that this was shared during the budget process, was that some parents were concerned that eliminating EA positions might mean that their students don't get the services that they are required to get. And we are reassuring them that, yes, we we will do that. And we're just going to do it in a little different way. And and also, our, we, I shared a couple of pictures there on the slides about our staff at the high school. Actually, a new student to the high school brought forward a program that is an international program called Best Buddies. And Best Buddies is an inclusive program that encourages students to get to know each other through activities and create friendships, ongoing friendships. And they shared this wonderful program that that was started and it's student-led and it's student-led during flex time. And and they they've come up with activities that they're doing. And they're hoping to grow this. And then we have our special ed staff are the, you know, the supervisors or the sponsors of that of that program. Do you want to say anything more about that one, Sarah? It was just, it was heartwarming to see what they're doing and that they've taken this on themselves and to increase the inclusion of our students at the high school. And the feedback from the rest of the Special Ed Advisory Council was, can we do this across the district? How can we do this? And we won't, don't want to grow it too quickly, but we want to do it right and grow it and and see what we can do at other levels to increase the capacity of our students to to create friendships, lifelong friendships with other students that have diverse needs. Thank you. And any questions that you have today?
Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, Sarah. Very thorough. Appreciate your expertise and your passion. Are there any questions or comments? Hey, Ben.
Thanks, Cheryl. Appreciate the the detailed report. Could you explain just again or briefly that tuition billing kind of shift? And you you said it was kind of a one-time shift or fix, but help me understand that a little bit better.
Right. I'm going to have Val jump in because Val and I had this conversation a little bit about this and and tuition billing is, it's in and of itself, a different thing than any other of our programs and funding.
So the the easiest way I can think about to explain it is for special ed, we have our revenue calculation and our expenditure calculation. And our revenue is based on fifty-five percent approximately of our expenditures from the prior year. Tuition billing is actually a reduction in revenue. So we don't get billed a million dollars and then put it into our expense. It's actually a reduction of revenue. Sorry, I'm talking with my hands. It's helpful. So what this, and MDE has been presenting this to districts, recommending districts do this. So we've been looking at this and effectively what would happen is by moving the salaries and benefits of those positions into expenditures, we're increasing that total spend expenditure. And then the following year, we're going to get fifty-five percent of that reimbursed. While in that current year, we get the full seven hundred and eighty thousand of the tuition billing that then doesn't reduce our revenue as much. So in that first year, it's a break even because the seven eighty is basically just flip-flopping. But then in that second year, we're still getting the seven eighty, but then we get fifty-five percent on those expenditures. So it's a way to increase revenue in the long term, again, with the the caveat that you're also increasing MO. But we we have strategies in the past to to deal with MO and make sure we're doing that in a calculated way. But this is pretty much the only way I've ever heard anyone at MDE say we could get you a little bit more money in sp. So we've looked at it and it seems to make sense for us. There's a caveat about the way you're funded and we meet the criteria, so it would work for us. But I don't know if that was helpful. But that's the best way that I could think to explain it.
So that seven eighty would carry for, I mean, assuming you can meet the MOE, right, that you could?
Yep. So the seven hundred and eighty is our federal allocation. And so we've typically had that year over year. We haven't seen a reduction in that amount. It's been pretty stable. Just a hair shy of the forty percent they've promised. And so that would always be there to to pay whatever. And we can choose how much we want to pay towards tuition billing.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Any other questions? Wanted to make some comments. Jenny's got a question.
Thank you both for all the information. I just have one question with the the fifty-five additional or the special education students coming into kindergarten for the, in this fall, coming up this fall. Are they dispersed sort of just coincidentally throughout the three elementary schools? Or are they kind of all going to be at a majority at one school?
So the students attend their neighborhood school unless they are placed in a specialized program to meet their high, high special needs. So sometimes we see larger numbers going to a a specific school, say, Spring Creek, because we have more of our programs that are highly specialized there. But we do, we we do try to balance that out as much as possible. We have programs at Greenville Park now, too, that have some that serve our higher need students. And so that helps us to balance out. And that's why we want to have another program added to Bridgewater so that we can then not have that happen. Because especially at Spring Creek, with enrollment decreasing, you get a you get out of balance with the number of students with high special needs in a in a school that's losing enrollment. And so you want, you want to have a a nice balance between students that have some needs and students that are typically developing.
That's kind, that's exactly what I was wondering if you have that flexibility to kind of work those numbers.
A little bit, but we try to keep true to their neighborhood school for that, for their inclusion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hey, Robert.
Thank you both. With with the increase, with increases in numbers of students, are we also seeing a change recently in that the types of referrals we're getting? Are we seeing more students with speech and OT and PT or these, a lot of high needs students we're we're getting?
Do you want to speak to her? I would say that we are seeing an increase in the complexities of the students that were are entering special education. And so not necessarily a specific disability category. I think our speech numbers are staying pretty status quo across there. There's increases here, decreases there, but it balances out across the district. But I would say in the past few years, we have seen an increase in the complexities of the students that we're seeing and in a fairly significant increase in the last one to two years of students who have significant social, emotional, behavioral and mental health needs that impact safety when you have students with larger numbers in a setting. And so that then requires increased special educations, special education services in some of our programs where there is a specific cap on some of those caseloads. So does that answer your question? Okay.
And and have we been able to place, I I know are the the Cannon Valley Special Ed Co-op has been having hiring problems in many places and hasn't been able to accept as many. Do do we have a waiting list of students more than typical or?
We do for the, I don't know about more than typical. We do for this year, we have a couple of students who are waiting for placement in the Special Ed Co-op in Cannon Valley. And so we have been very creative in meeting the needs of those students and keeping them in the school building rather than placing them in a home-based setting, because that's just not what's best for kids. So we have been pretty creative in that. I, we're looking, it's looking fairly positive for the fall for the students that we have referred. We're fairly confident that, you know, barring any unforeseen circumstances for the Cannon Valley Special Ed Staffing Planning, that we should be able to have the students that we have made referrals for have a spot in the in in the program.
Thank you. And thank you for your creativity.
Yeah, yes.
Great questions. Any other questions or comments?
I just have a couple of comments. I, Cheryl and I have been talking about this presentation for some while. We initially did not plan that until May. I gave you a heads up at the last board meeting that this was coming. And Cheryl and I talked about last week, we accelerated this plan because we want you to see and we want the people who are watching tonight's board meeting, when we talk about all things special ed, the cross subsidy, the complexity of the programming, the needs that we are seeing that we are that we must support as a community, both from a required perspective and that that moral imperative to make sure that we're serving students and and what their needs are. I, there's no, nothing to say more than take a look at the last three slides of this presentation. It is three slides in nine-point font of acronyms that are used in the special education world. And so what we want board members and we want the community to understand is special education services, we provide exemplary services, but it's complicated, it costs money. And the federal government, the state government have not kept up their end of the bargain. We finally have someone who's trying to, the the State Department of Education is trying to help us take more advantage of the federal funds to be able to have some relief. It doesn't come close, but it's a move in the right direction. So the takeaway for you tonight, the detailed presentation is to show you the effort that goes in to make sure we're putting existing staff where they need to be. And the net increase looks like it's going to be one point eight FTE. But again, this is a scenario that is highly regulated and where there are requirements essentially, if you will, on class size. I mean, that's that's the equivalent in general education. So we're seeing, even with all of the thoughtful shift and work that has been done, that increase of one point eight FT is really no choice. There's very little choice in that. And and that's okay. We're we're happy to serve those students. But when we talk about the broader context of the budget, this is why the complexity is there. And you heard some of the best people in the state share that with you. We just need to understand some of the items that go on behind the scenes to make it all work. So I appreciate board members' engagement. I appreciate the community watching this because it's a very important presentation to understand how the mechanics of the special education system work. And my final comment, I'd be remiss, this is probably Cheryl Hall's last, one of her last times presenting to the school board, retiring from our district at the end of this year after an illustrious career in Northfield, going off other places, a former Minnesota Administrator of Special Education, Special Education Director of the Year, a true treasure. And so I want to thank Cheryl for her work and the work that she did to prepare her replacement. Because we are happy that we hired Sarah Pratt to take over. This is what succession planning looks like, folks. This is how it's done. And so we have an exemplary special education department from the leadership to the educational assistants in the classroom. But people need to understand the complexity that goes into this. And it takes real leadership to make it happen. So good work, everyone. Now you have, when you talk to people about special education, well, why does it cost so much more? You now understand a little bit more of where does the money go? And it goes a lot to direct service of students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next week, item D is an updated recommendation on the potential transportation service changes. Val and Dr. Hummel will present.
I'll take it away. So we have had lots of conversation about transportation thoughtful consideration. And at this point, we are recommending that we do all of the recommendations from the three, the March thirteenth proposal, except for the fee, fee-based increase. The feedback. The feedback that we've gotten is definitely a little bit mixed on this topic. And there are some concerns that we have about what are the, the long term impacts, even short term impacts to, you know, cars and traffic at the buildings, families being able to afford it. We really want to make sure that we can be super thoughtful and roll this out in a way that makes sense if that's what we choose to do. But it is not a recommendation for the fall. I also have looked at how many fee based increases were in our priority based budget review. And I just am concerned about adding another one onto our families. So my recommendation at this time is basically to do all the other things which are operational in nature and totally make sense to review and implement. But to pause on the fee at this time, obviously, we will continue to look at the budget in detail and see if there are other opportunities in the future that we can help to offset this. But that is my recommendation at this time for the transportation.
And I think we just want to emphasize the, the areas that we are looking at moving forward that are really operational and administrative determination in nature, where the things around that opt-in transportation model. So requiring that people tell us that they want transportation before we schedule them for transportation. In the past, Benjamin Buss had just rolled over basically the previous year. So that's of course an administrative process piece. We talked about collaborating with the city of Northfield on road planning. We've made some headway there. There is an area that we theoretically could have reduced transportation service to for next year because trails have been installed and with the roundabout, it would have provided a safe walkway for students from the neighborhoods across from the middle school to get to the middle school and or high school. But then there's a construction project. Now thankfully, it's a housing construction project. We'll take it, right? But that means it's not safe for us to have those students cross at that point. So that's something that will come down as soon as that construction project is finished. We'll start to execute that process of having those students participate or be considered within the parent required transportation zone. And then things like looking at the flexibility and bus and arrival departure times, that scheduling, right? That's working with administrators about how much can we modify the start and end times of the school? They were not talking substantially, but just staggering a bit so that there might be the opportunity for some additional savings. And then, as you know, we are continuing reviewing the activities transportation. We already have some reductions in the priority based budget process for that. But additional areas of how we might tighten up on that activities transportation. So those are the things that we plan to move forward. They're operational in nature. And I think Val has really described the fee decision or the few recommendations we've come to you. We take this very seriously. I want to just say Val and Benjamin Buss, longtime great partners, worked tirelessly to look at what more efficiencies could we provide? And as it turns out, we've shared with you pretty efficient system. And so finding additional efficiencies has been much more difficult than anticipated. We also recognize that it doesn't take, Ted Baxter would ask, where are you finding the additional money, right? We, we had three hundred and fifty thousand dollars scheduled for reduction. And we know that we're going to come back to you with plans to address that over the next few years. So we want to acknowledge that that's something that we told you we thought we could do, that we cannot follow through on. We were wrong. And so we were wrong in our estimate. We were wrong in what we thought we could do. We could not do it. And when that happens, we tell you that. And so we commit to coming back and finding different ways that we are able to adjust the district services budget. I don't have a timeline for you on that. That's, that's not something that we can give you tonight. But you know that we are relentless in making sure that we follow through and we'll come back to you and show you what are the steps that we are taking to try to improve that. So I apologize that we were not able to hit that mark as we promised. If you think about all of the things that we have done with the budget over the past couple of years, we hit on most of them, but this is one that we, we just missed the mark and we apologize to you for that oversight or that. We didn't hit the mark in terms of hitting the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We, we might have been Pollyannaish on what we thought we could get there. So that's what we have to say.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm asking all the questions tonight. Appreciate that, Val, and yeah, I appreciate the attentiveness to, to fees, kind of given where we're seeing in other places in the budget. Do we know? I mean, do we have any estimate in terms of efficiencies or potential cost savings with the other things that we've talked about here? Is there really not really an easy way to, to estimate that?
There's not a good way to estimate that. We, especially with the way enrollment has changed in the district, it's very difficult to say at this point how many students are going to ride next year with the opt-in. Our hope is to get that shared out in the upcoming family updates. Benjamin Buss would like to see as much of that by the end of school so they can get that planning started. So I would hope we would have a better sense by July. But I will tell you that the transportation is very much similar to what our buildings experience where people are showing up and we're making it work. And so we're going to try and be diligent about that, but it's a lot of last minute planning on behalf of parents, which obviously we want to make it work for them and their students, because that's what we do. But it makes the, makes it a little hard to estimate then.
Good. Appreciate that. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Val, what, what are some possible scenarios that you see in savings or route or efficiencies based on this idea that we will have a better sense of who's riding the bus?
So I would say, you know, the one that Dr. Homan referenced, the, the neighborhood that's across from the middle school has a significant amount of students for transportation. And if they're eligible to walk, that will reduce the number of routes, both secondary and elementary that are required there, which means those routes can either be shorter or pick up other students, or maybe we can reduce an entire route. I think that the biggest hurdle for us is really just our geographic area. And we don't want to put the burden on the rural students and having excessive ride times. And so if there's ways we can streamline any of that, it's, it's really going to probably be more in town. I think the other thing that we look at is the transportation to N C E C and the timing of that. Just because they're, they use the smaller buses because they're littler kids. And so if we can be more efficient with the ones that are doing sped routes for the elementary schools and the timeliness of that, there's a few opportunities there. But it's honestly a lot of where people live in, when they sign up and how we have to do the routing. So if there's families that are on a, you know, dead end road and you have to drive out of your way to get it, those are really hard to plan for. But we're hopeful that some of the in-town things can get cleaned up in the future and provide a little bit more flexibility.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item six is committee reports. I didn't see any. Okay, then we will move on to item seven. Approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the grouping for separate consideration? Okay, is there a motion to approve the, I'm sorry? Freudian stuff, yes, yes. Item E, Superintendent Operations and Strategic Plan Update.
I'm not going to take that on as a comment on the content.
Okay.
Very good. A few items here tonight to share with you about in my report. I did want to share this evening the results of our district wide parent and caregiver survey results. So Tim, I'm going to plug in if you could shift to the table here. So I've given you just a few items of why do we conduct these surveys? We know that adults have an impact on students. And so evaluating how these adults perceive these systems is an important indicator of our system's health. And so that's why we survey once a year, an anonymous survey process. We also know that both employees and parents have choice. And so when they can choose where their children attend school or where they work, that's important data for us. We want to know that. And we've adopted a strategic plan that says employing engagement, parent satisfaction are benchmarks. So the surveys this year were administered online as they have been for several years. We had a, just around a ten day window to accept those results. Multiple email reminders were sent by the district and individual building levels. All survey responses are anonymous, but they're not confidential. What that means is that when you fill out the survey, the administrators have an opportunity to see what's in the survey, but it's anonymous. We cannot tell who are the people who submitted those. We had three hundred and fifty-six employee responses, four hundred and forty parent caregiver responses. So just in this rollout, we called this process a rollout, where we share the data with you. I'm just going to highlight the top two greatest strengths and the two lowest rated survey items that are the greatest opportunity for growth. First of all, in the employee experience survey, the overall mean was three point nine two, up from three point nine one last year. Our survey partners at Student Education did re, are they retooled or they reformatted the questions this year? So this is a baseline. So while they can do some cross walking of the previous year questions to this year, they are new questions. And so that means we're renorming across the student network this year. But what I'm told by our student education coaches, we're one of the few schools where their employee experience mean went up, even if just by point one, I'd call that flat. But just even going up by a small amount was unusual this year. We didn't increase the number of participants this year by about twenty-five to three hundred and fifty-six. The two greatest strengths that we have, the question was, I believe my work positively impacts those we serve. That was a four point five three rating on a five point scale. Now you're going to see two items in my report, a top box and a top two box. The top box is what percentage of respondents gave that the highest score possible? So on that, my, I believe my work positively impacts those we serve. Just about sixty percent, fifty-nine percent of respondents gave that the highest score possible. Over time, I have become a big fan of what I call the top two box in a five point Likert scale. This is the people who gave it a four or five, people who are to the right of mixed feelings. And we see that ninety-five and a half percent of the employee respondents believe that their work positively impacts those they serve. The second highest rated question was, I have a clear understanding of the mission and goals of my organization, something that of course brings warmth to the superintendent's heart, that people understand the direction that we're going, four point two eight on a five point scale. And when we look at that top two box, almost eighty-eight percent of people gave that one of the top two scores. When you have a staff that believes the work that they are doing matters, and when they have a clear understanding of the direction, that is a foundation for success. So that's a great place to be. When we look at the greatest opportunities for growth, I want to point out the timing of the survey was just right in the middle of our budget reduction process. So not shocking that the lowest rated area, lowest rated question was, I feel organizational resources are allocated, allocated to maximize effectiveness across the organization. Even with that, at a three point five six rating and only sixteen percent of folks giving it the top score, when you look at the top two scores, we're well above the fifty percent mark. Fifty-seven percent of people said that they agreed or strongly agreed with that statement. So that's an important piece of conceptual data that I think is critical for us to understand that, you know, nearly two thirds or close to two thirds of people say, yes, I agree that we're doing that. Now, still the lowest rated score, so we're going to work on how do we talk about that? How do we talk about what resources are, making sure everyone has a shared understanding of what do we consider organizational resources, level resources? So that is our lowest rated area. I received feedback concerning area for improving my performance. That's a three point six on a five point scale, sixty percent of people giving the top two box score. So those are the overall results for the, the employee survey. When we move to the parent experience survey, I have a sincere concern about the number of respondents. We've used the similar methodology of how we recruited people to participate in the survey. But it is, just you look at, we're half of the, less than half of the number of people who have participated in the past. We have a number of hypotheses of why this happens. Employee experience surveys, it's been shown you get good participation leading into a break. We think that this might be the opposite with parents, because as people might have been preparing for spring break, they may have thought, well, not going to get to that survey right now. We also think that we may have crossed the threshold of people who use email, right? Email has been successful for us for a long time. We know more and more people are using text messaging and other strategies. So we understand moving forward that we're going to have to use far more venues to be able to get the information out than what we've done in the past. Regardless, over four hundred responses is statistically significant. So when we take a look at four point oh overall rating down from four point eight, four point oh eight last year. But again, that could be accounted for in the cell size. When we take a look at the greatest strengths, I think when we look at, I would hope every year our best score is I am treated with respect at the school. That is a foundation. If people don't feel respected, the rest of it doesn't matter, right? They're not going to give us the feedback that we need. And when you look at that top two box, almost eighty-seven percent of those respondents gave it one of the top two scores. So that's a great place to start. People looking and believing that the school is clean and well maintained was the second highest rated area. Greatest opportunities for growth. We have been continuing to work on this for a long time about people regularly receiving feedback from school staff on how their child is learning, and I receive positive phone calls, emails or notes about my child from school. We've seen an increase. We've seen some positive movement in the feedback portion. But despite a tremendous amount of effort this year, our score on, I received positive phone calls, emails or notes about my child from the school went down. And so we retool and we figure out what's next. We think some of the strides we used this year have merit. We just maybe haven't had enough time to really embed them yet. But we're continuing to work on with some teams about what can we do to improve those areas? So just the, the what's next. Each school will conduct a survey rollout between now and the end of the school year. They will do one with employees, one with a representative group of parents. They will ideate things at their building level about why did they, why did they achieve success in the areas that were the most highly rated? What do they need to do to improve the areas? What are actions that they can take to improve those areas that are lowest rated? We do that by saying this hypothetical question. If next year, everybody were to give us a five, the highest score possible, what would, what would it look like? What would we do in that way? Because it, rather than saying, oh, we take this step, this is what would it look like? What are the actions that we would see being taken to have earned that five? The last question that we ask in all these surveys is a shout out question. Who has been especially helpful to you? This week, I'll be sending shout outs to two hundred and sixty-four different employees. That's pretty awesome, right? So two hundred and sixty-four, I believe, employees were highlighted. They'll get a personal email from me with the text of what did their colleagues say about them? The principals handle their own parent engagement survey results in terms of a shout out, so they'll take care of those. But again, you know, this, the shout out is a rocket fuel for our culture because when my colleague tells me, hey, you're doing a good job, right? And here's why you're doing a good job. People again feel that value that, that what they're doing matters, not only to the students, but to each other as a team. So you'll see some action steps included in the annual school improvement plans. And you have the full reports in the packet as well, without the comments, obviously. But you have the full reports at the district level. I did not include the school breakdowns yet because most staff have, are yet to see those results. You heard the N C E C has already seen them, but buildings have a window in which to roll that out. And we'll share that breakdown of building by building results with you as schools have that chance to share that data. I'm going to move on and then take all questions about all of these items. I just talked to you about this before when we did the capital projects or the capital, operating capital budget. We have an iPad lease that's up at the end of this school year, or that's actually going into next school year. We are working on the renewal of that iPad lease. So I've included just a few items in the report that for your consideration. And the key part here is that we just want people to know that we are updating that lease. The funds have already been approved for it. We always look at what other devices that might meet our needs. We have come back to recommit that at this time, the iPad is what we feel is the best device for us. We'll continue to look at that. That may not always be the case. That's why we lease, right? It's one of the reasons that we lease. So the actual lease documents will be coming to you most likely at the next board meeting. We won't ask you to vote on it then. You'll get the actual lease presentation. And then we'll ask you to approve that lease the second meeting in May. I do want to take just a little bit of time to briefly talk about the ICE Arena Dilemma update. We know that this is something that this board has discussed and discussed and discussed because we know this is a community wide dilemma. We understand that we have a desire to have ICE in our community, Minnesota. It's a, it's a Minnesota hot dish, right, to have these kinds of amenities. But we also know it can be a challenge to figure out how do these kinds of shared facilities get updated? So I wanted to share a couple of items. We continue to work on a public-private partnership. a public private partnership uh, with the city of Northfield and a business partner. So we've been working with a business partner in the community. What I can tell you for sure is we're not exactly sure who would be the owner of the facility yet. There's some discussions about is the private partner the owner of the facility? Is the city the owner of the facility? What I can tell you for sure is this district will not own the facility. And as you remember, there were some calls that the district should consider owning the facility. That is not on the table at this point, uh, nor will it be on the table. Um, we know that the city is stepping up with a substantial investment around nine million dollars that would help the construct uh, the to fund the construction. Um, we also know that there'd be about a million dollars that the city would get from the sale of the arena. And local private partners have pledged to be able to raise at about two million dollars. Now I wanna be super clear about what is under consideration at this time. Super clear. We are talking about lease levying any facility, just like we do now. Right now, we use lease levy um, to pay for our current ICE Arena lease. We use it to pay for our lease for the gymnastics facility. We use it to do some leasing at the Dundas Dome. So this is a strategy that the board is able to use under Minnesota law to be able to levy for the lease amounts that we have. Because we'd be having a new facility, there's a there would be a new facility, our lease would increase. So our estimated annual lease cost would be around three hundred thousand dollars. We are yet working on, does that include ICE time and other operational costs or does it not? That's still something that we're working on. It would stand to reason, we probably will have some additional um, operational lease responsibility. And then we are working through committing, how could we commit to do that over approximately a twenty year period? So in some um, in some reports about this, some people have seen the the number six million dollars to be super clear, that's not a mu- amount of money that would be upfront. It'll be the total in lease payments over twenty years. This is far from over. We are working, I do feel better about the track that we have with the solution than I have on many solutions for some time. But it is still something that is in flux. Um, you will obviously have much more discussion before this were to happen. But I just wanna make sure that I give you an update as to where we are at right now. And I really am grateful for the partners, the city, uh, the private partner who continue to come together to try to solve this dilemma. It's a challenging one. And so we continue to work on it. We continue to have to persevere and to be able to find what is a solution that the community can live with and that everyone um, can can believe that they can afford for a facility like this. And we all know um, and reasonable people can disagree on this, but we do know that we have a significant number of students, both youth and in our high school who participate in hockey. And there it stands to reason that if we didn't have ICE, if the building were to allow to um, or we couldn't use it anymore, some of those students, we don't know how many, but some of those students would leave, right? Exacerbating our current enrollment issue. So I can't tell you today how many people that would be ten or two hundred. But what we know is that that is a possibility and a probability, the impact, the total impact, that's up for debate, right? We just don't know that. Along with hockey, I wanted to share with you in the packet here, I have uh, given you the notification here that we are looking at um, dissolving the boys hockey cooperative sponsorship with Randolph. I shared this with you back in January and we dissolved the girls hockey cooperative sponsorship. Uh, we were hoping that we would continue to be placed in class A for boys hockey. Um, we have to count a portion of Randolph's enrollment when the state high school league assigns us to a competitive placement. Unfortunately, we were uh, put into one double A as opposed to one single A, which means we play much larger schools. And so um, because of that, we are planning to dissolve the cooperative sponsorship with Randolph. We have two students from Randolph who are participating on our hockey team. We would, if they, there are some options. Students could open and roll here and continue to play hockey. The downside of that is that under state high school league transfer rules, they would not be allowed to participate in other sports for at least one year, varsity sports that is. There's been some discussion that those students might consider um, being homeschooled. And if those students were homeschooled, we can do a cooperative sponsorship with a homeschool and only count those students who are involved in the homeschool, one or two. That is something we would consider for those students currently on our program. But moving forward, we would not consider that. And so this is one of those difficult pieces because we've long had some great partnerships with Randolph on these kinds of items. But really what the case is, is for the remainder of the program, um, we are going to a competitive section placement that our actual own enrollment would not place us in. Because we're trying to be good neighbors. And when we think about the impact on the rest of the student athletes or participate um, compared to what this cooperative sponsorship brings to us, we're disappointed. We are been grateful to offer that. But we think that this is the the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few in this particular case. So we're not asking you to do that tonight, but we'll be bringing that notification forward. More details to come um, as we would go down that road. And so that is my report for this evening. Oh, one more. Oh, yes. Thank you for catching that. So we were, I I didn't make comments after Aaron's um, presentation because all you need to know is what I have in the report on this, which is we did through the people will talk about how great of an early childhood program we have. And so we hosted Tiki Brown, who's an assistant commissioner for the Department of Children and Family Services. And she came and toured the N C E C last week. She met with teachers, she met with service providers, administrators. Um, she was a result from when Christie Purcell visited the site in early March. And when we gave her a tour at the end, all we, wow. Wow. Boy, I would move here. And then I said, well, there aren't any houses, so hard to do that. Um, but what I want you to know is that when we have hosted people at the N C E C, you need to be proud of what we did in twenty eighteen with that bond. What we have put together is not only a best in class facility, but it's it is a best in class facility that is is supporting best in class programming. And we talked to this assistant commissioner about, yes, we access county assistance dollars, so low income families have access to this very high quality childcare. And in the old days, someone who works in a a job with hourly pay trying to have to be able to leave their job to take a a child from one daycare facility to preschool, sometimes to another daycare facility afterwards, the hassle that causes is tremendous. And the fact that our staff just walks students from the uh, childcare to preschool and back is such a relief for so many families, especially for our families who are working multiple jobs. And so you just need to know that the vision that we had for that is starting to come out. You saw that with the middle space. When we show people that, they're like, oh, my gosh, who has this? No one. Right? So even people from the metro have said, nobody in the metro has this kind of facility. So that vision of being able to close achievement gaps by really focusing on early childhood education. We were delayed by the pandemic, but that vision is starting to be realized. So the community should be incredibly proud of the vision that we had about committing to early childhood uh, education. Thanks for catching that.
Okay, welcome. And I apologize for skipping that item.
Nope, I apologize for skipping the assistant commissioner, but I thought hockey and ICE went together.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Are there any questions or comments?
Hey, do you have a question? Um, I'm guessing on the Minnesota State High School League because if we're doing a a co-op or a uh, partnership, the Randolph, the isn't the way that they look at it is like we have to add their enrollment too, whether we've got one or okay, so that
It's partial enrollment. You don't have to, you don't have to add all of it, but there's
That would automatically bump us into for one or two. I mean, any sport, you'd really have to look at that and say, hey.
Yeah, and we're really looking at all of the cooperative sponsorships right now. Um, the key part there is, of course, it depends on how many classes there are. In hockey, there are two classes and we just straddle, we're very close on that edge.
Yeah.
And so in this case, the addition of that enrollment does kick us into a a competitive section placement where we become the smallest school as opposed to one of the larger schools.
Yeah, that's, it sounds like you're in the right direction there.
Jenny, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Claudia. Um, regarding the parent and the employee surveys, um, do you happen to know a roundabout number of the like a completion percentage? Um, of to of the total employees and and total parents?
Yeah, so the employee uh, is a well above fifty percent. It depends on how you calculate our employees. Typically, we look at that we roughly have six hundred employees. Um, we do more of the W twos than that, but some of that is air and staff, uh, you know, some more seasonal kinds of things. We typically use around six hundred as the total employee feature. So we're above fifty percent, not quite to sixty percent, but getting fairly close. And it's that number's probably for the people who look at themselves as more full time employees, that is probably less than six hundred, but we use the number six hundred as that round feature. So um, four hundred and forty four. Uh, I will tell you, I think that is it is gonna be, so if we have around four thousand students roughly. Um, and we had four hundred and forty four survey. We do ask parents to complete one survey per building in that one. So I I think conservatively, we're talking about maybe ten percent, maybe fifteen percent, not nearly what we want. Um, we are discussing how can we either increase that number substantially? Again, different ways of distributing the survey, making sure people know exactly how much time it will take to complete the survey. Buildings and sometimes like trying to be creative about when you're sitting in the pickup line, can we have somebody with a QR code, right? Where you could s- snap the picture and fill the survey out while I'm waiting for my student to come out of the building. Of course, not while they're driving, that wouldn't be okay. But if you're parked and your car shut off, that's, you know, acceptable. Um, so those are some of the things we're also looking at. For that is it time to go to some kind of randomized stratified sample approach? So that we're, you know, really getting a a more true picture of the district.
Okay, and then regarding the iPad leases, are there gonna be any grade levels uh, next year that will not be taking home the iPads similar to, I think this year there were some grades that decided not to, or is that left up entirely to um, the teacher?
So this year we standardized in our reset year, we standardized on having elementary students leave their iPads at school. Uh, it's it's interesting because the the staff members really rely on those devices for during the day instruction. And so there was concerns about any inconsistency of kids not bringing them back at the elementary was was troublesome. And I certainly understand that there's um, some other ways that that could be addressed, but that was the decision in our reset year this year. That doesn't mean in the future we couldn't change that. Right now, the plan would be to keep those students at school or those devices at school. Uh, we are doing some analysis of um, some of the technology based reading support that we're doing, comparing it to some of the preliminary M C outcomes. For example, in science, um, early on, we're seeing some positive um, connection uh, between some of those items. So another reason why wanting to try to keep them at school to the best of our ability, that's where we're at right now, Jenny. Um, again, it could be, that could change. But what we are working with is we're working so that all elementaries use a similar approach. Because it shouldn't matter whether I'm at one building or another. If I'm in fifth grade, it should be a similar expectation across the board. So we we pruned it all back this year to keep the devices at school. And then we will see how it manifests itself moving forward.
Okay, and then on the ICE Arena dilemma, what is our current lease for the ICE Center? Is it annual or is it um, only during the school year months?
That's a great question. So Val's gonna answer. We we pay annually around fifty thousand dollars right now, I think, something like that.
Yep, forty five to fifty thousand, and that is invoiced while they're using it. So um, I mean, that obviously it's over the winter months that we're paying that. Um, but then the lease the lease levy revenue is part of our lease levy certification process. And so we estimate how much we think we're gonna spend. And then they give us that amount on the um, levy. And then there's a reconciliation process. So if it's over under, then those adjustments come on the following years.
Okay, so there can be adjustments. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? Okay, um, there were no committee reports. That's item six. Item seven is the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for a separate consideration? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Okay, moved by Ben, second. By Robert. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye. Aye, opposed. Okay, motion carries. Item eight is our items for individual action. We have three items, two of them resolutions that Anita will facilitate. Um, A, policy recommendations. I'll take a motion and then open for discussion. Is there a motion to approve the policy committees recommended updates to policies? Two oh nine, five fifteen point five, seven oh six and eight oh nine as presented. Moved by Jenny, second. Second, my Corey. Um, Dr. Hillman, would you like to make any comments?
Um, I really presented these at the last meeting, so I would just stand for any questions.
All right, questions or a comment? All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Um, our first resolution is discontinuing and reducing educational programs and positions. This resolution is approved by the Board of Education annually as part of the legal process for reducing or discontinuing the contracts of licensed staff. Is there a motion to approve the resolution discontinuing and reducing educational programs and positions? Moved by Robert, second. Second, my Corey. Um, Dr. Hillman, would you like to make any comment?
Just wanna briefly say that this and the next item are the technical uh, steps that we take after you've approved the global budget reductions that you did at the last meeting. Now we're doing the technical operations work uh, to implement those. And that's what this particular item and the next item are as well. They're just the methodology that we use to carry out what you have approved.
There any questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anita, will you conduct a roll call vote? Butler?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Gonzalez, George?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, then next item is the resolution for termination and non-renewal of probationary licensed staff. The board is requested to adopt the enclosed resolution related to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of the following probationary licensed teachers effective at the close of the current twenty twenty two, twenty three school year. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as presented? Moved by Jenny, second. My Ben. Um, Dr. Hillman?
Um, as I said, uh, the, this is another step in the process of implementing uh, the um, the global budget reduction process that you had approved at the last meeting. And then there's some other pieces around as people who have been long term substitutes. Again, this is the technical process that we use to sever employment in those cases.
Um, board members, any questions or comments? Right, Anita, will you conduct a roll call vote? Butler?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Gonzalez, George?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Yep, the resolution passes. Okay, now we are on to item number nine, items for information. There is an enrollment report. And we will hear from um, Val and Dr. Hillman.
So in our spirit of continuous improvement, our continued commitment to continuous improvement, we continue to try to make sure that we are giving you um, in-flight data about uh, the number of students who are present in our schools and who are earning um, dollars for from the state. So it's about to show you how many students we have, where do they go, what are the class sizes? And then how does that compare to what we had predicted? So we've made a couple of changes to the enrollment report this year based on your feedback and again, trying to get to that clarity. Val and I have discussed a additional round of changes that I've asked Val to explain to you this evening.
So one of the things with the um, the budget number on the bottom is we update the budget um, estimate in December with a revised budget once we have the October first enrollment. And because this was a new process, it was not on my radar. Um, and we realized um, after the last report that that hadn't been updated. So we wanted to make sure we added that. Um, but one of the things that we're still trying to work out is my budget estimate includes all of our A D M um, that we generate revenue on. The early childhood, um, so we talked briefly about that with um, during the community education budget. The early childhood A D M is specific for early childhood special ed students. So we get a small amount of A D M for the hours that they are um, being served. And so that's included in our A D M calculation. But because it's a percentage, the number of students served doesn't correlate to the A D M. So we've typically just excluded that. Um, but the other part that's more complex is the um, part-time independent study students for the that are shared between the A L C and the high school. So I'm working on a way to figure out exactly how much that is um, based on the hours we're serving, but that number's included in my estimate. But we exclude that total number of students um, on the enrollment report. So while it looks like there's a a pretty substantial um, negative amount or that the budget's over or anticipated to be over. Though the way we are operationally doing that is at the end of the year. And so I, I'm not concerned about my estimate at this point. I think it will all come out at the end. But we are trying in this new model of being more transparent, of trying to figure out the best way to reconcile my estimate and our actual um, kind of ongoing data. Because as you can imagine, there's a lot of moving parts in our uh, student information system. And so we're trying to make sure that we're updating this in a way that makes A lot of moving parts in our uh student information system. And so we're trying to make sure that we're updating this in a way that makes sense. But there is just a lot of pieces that we're trying to figure out how to put together. So. If that is helpful.
Hey, thank you. Did you want to add any comments, October?
I did not.
Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, um, National Teacher Appreciation Week is May eighth through the twelfth. Teacher Appreciation Week is celebrated the first full week of May and is our chance to say thank you to those that play or have played. A huge role in our lives. We recognize the dedicated educators across the country, our state and, and especially our district. And the lasting contributions they make to our lives. Um, letter C graduation update, A L C graduation is scheduled for six P M on Friday, June second at the middle school auditorium. Northfield's high school graduation is scheduled for two P M on Sunday, June eleventh at Memorial Field. Future meetings are Monday, May first, five fifteen, a special closed board meeting here in the district board room. Monday, May eighth, six P M and Monday twenty second, six P M also here in the district boardroom, regular board meeting. That's all the business that we have tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, moved by Jeff, second. By Ben, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Yeah, adjourned.